Mayor Truman.
Here.
Councilmember Colbert.
Here.
Councilmember Wilson.
Here.
Councilmember Reed.
Here.
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Gregory.
Here.
Councilmember Kirstetter. Councilmember Evans.
Here.
Councilmember Stan.
I'll stand for the invocation and pledgable allegiance.
Hi, guys. Thank you for this day. We thank you for this community we call home. Thankful for all those who love and support and support our community. I just ask for your wisdom and guidance for the items on the agenda this evening. Lord, just help the common ground be found for everybody and what's best for the community. Thank you. Praise in Jesus' name.
Let me introduce to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic of America. Please be seated. Ask for the approval of tonight's agenda. Is this a with the addition? Okay.
Move to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
Have a motion of second to approve the agenda as amended. Any further discussion? All in favor of mayor? Signify raising your hand. All opposed, same side, motion carried. Moving on to approval of the minutes of the August nineteenth meeting.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of August nineteen, two thousand twenty-five, regular council minutes as presented.
Second.
Motion of second to approve the minutes of August nineteen. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify raising your hand. All opposed, same side, motion carried. No presentation, no presentations or proclamations tonight. Moving on to public forum. Is there anyone here from the public that'd like to address the council on anything that's not on the agenda? Okay, moving on to appointments. No appointments, old business. The old business, we're moving on to new business. Item A, letter of intent, Elevate Senior Living.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Happy Tuesday and happy September. Fall is upon us already. I can't believe it. Here before you this evening is a proposal, a letter of intent proposal to develop a senior living community on the parcel that the city owns on Harvest Place. This is that area that's located right to the northeast of where the rec center is, since we do own all that ground basically when Emporia comes north and then where North Wind comes across to the east, everything in that kind of corner there, that southwest corner of the development areas you see here. And I did my best job at cutting and pasting what Elevate could potentially look like on this site. So very exciting evening here. We've been working on this for, I know, the entire six years, six plus years, six plus years that I've been here now. And I know many of you on the council have been wanting to try to attract a senior living complex for a long time. And it looks like that day is here. And so before we will be the letter of intent, and before we get into that, we do have a presentation by Elevate. Bruce here is with Elevate that will run you through a quick presentation of what they're looking at building in our community and the partnership that will ensue. So Bruce?
Okay, thank you. Let me introduce myself. I'm Bruce Henches. I wear two hats, Elevate, Senior Living, and Spellman-Brady and Company. Little background about me, much like Valley Center, I'm a small town Iowa guy. And my family was a, had the hardware business. My grandpa started it. My dad ran it seventy-seven years in Dyersville, Iowa. Dyersville, you might know it as the home of field of dreams. So, you know, very proud of living in a small town, growing up in a small town and moved on. But part of the benefits of being in that small town was as my parents aged, my father passed, my mom was aging and had dementia. But the benefit of being in a small town, I got a call one day from a, the grocery store manager said, just want you to let you know, your mom's in the grocery store, she's got two black eyes, and she's kind of wandering around the store. So that was my call to action. So then we moved her, we moved her to a community. And I had worked in senior living for Spellman-Brady and Company, an interior design firm nationally for twenty-five years. But this was really my call to action to really understand senior living as an adult child. So fast forward, in two thousand nineteen, we're at a trade show. And part, you know, at this trade show, Leading Age Florida, with a operator, senior living operator, which we've done a lot of work with. And in that show, everybody was talking about higher end senior living. Nobody was talking about the forgotten middle market. So, and we were frustrated about that. And after, after a day of conference, we sat with a burger and beer and just talked about the needs of the community. I'm fresh from my, from my experiences with my mom. And Joe Jasmine with American Healthcare Management, an operator, said a few words that struck, struck me. He said, we can do better. I said, what's better look like? So on the cocktail napkin, we drew some things, had some ideas, probably ordered another beer, and, and created an idea. And on the way home, that napkin, Southwest Flight, the best ideas are, are born on napkins. And that was really kind of the start of senior living and in the for providing affordable senior living. I spent seventy-eight hundred dollars a month in a senior community. And she ran out of money two months before, she, she passed two months before running out of money and two weeks after getting her last check of insurance. So I went through that experience. So that was close. And really the why, we picked on affordable senior living because twenty-five million can't afford today's options. And just by doing some quick math, twelve to sixteen million could afford it if we provide that, that, that property, that community for them. And what we look at is market rates and doing the studies. There's, there's a lot of product on the high end. And there's some product on the low end. There's not a lot in the middle. The high end, we can't afford the low end. You don't want, you, you just don't want your loved ones living there many times. There's not a lot in the middle. And that's where we wanted to, to build something and address just that. So what we did, we created Elevate Senior Living. We created Elevate Senior Living in March of two thousand twenty. And two weeks later, the nation stopped. But that was our opportunity with Elevate Senior Living. We looked around the room. We're like, how can we create a team? And we looked at it, you know, a table much like this. How do we fill out all the seats around the table? Who do we need at that table? And we selected a turnkey approach of people that we've worked with in the past. We've got an operator. We've got an architect. We've got interiors. We've got a general contractor. We've got insurance. We've got a casework provider. We've got technology. We've got marketing in a, in a sales CRM. So people that we work with day to day, we created Elevate Senior Living with that. And then wanted to create a model. And we were able, really blessed by COVID, to create a model and meet on a weekly basis. When the world stood still, we were able to, to work and create a prototype that we wanted to, what does affordable, defining affordable, what that looks like? And we want to focus on three things, building smaller, more efficient, being smarter with our staffing, and providing better with food, and, and creating a prototype. Here we go. And then creating a prototype that we could fit. And as Brett mentioned, we started talking a while back about a site that, that attracted us. And we pulled our team together and started putting together some ideas in terms of what this could look like. And the attractiveness of being in a tertiary market like Valley Center attracts us. And putting together an opportunity, we look at Elevate as providing assisted living and memory care with independent living. And so this model on the right is a C-shaped building with a clubhouse for assisted living and memory care. Off to the left, you see hybrid independent living homes. And we chose that. We had a few different options to look at because up to the north, there's a lot of duplexes in the area. And we didn't want to provide more duplexes just for the sake of providing more duplexes. So we wanted to provide an option for seniors to live. And this is what Elevate looks like. We have a, a, we opened our first location in Clearwater, Florida. This is an example of what it looks like. In the middle is the Clearwater, is the clubhouse, assisted living, memory care clubhouse with the C-shaped building behind it. That serves as our core for the assisted living and memory care folks, our front door. And this is the overhead view of what that looks like. We'll probably take out the palm trees. We won't, we won't have those here in, in Valley Center. But this gives a good representation rendering wise, what that can look like with a beautiful, beautiful shared courtyard in the middle. The, the floor plan is designed with the resident mind, with an individual in mind. These are resident neighborhoods. These are neighborhoods of sixteen. We, we share resources. We share a kitchen, but in the middle, if you, on the left, is our theater neighborhood. And those, it's a neighborhood of sixteen, which means we staff a one to eight ratio. And in the daytime, that is, it's much like you live at home where nobody has kitchenettes in their bedrooms. Senior living traditionally puts kitchenettes in their bedrooms. Nobody wants that. It's waste. So we looked at all of the items that we can take out from senior living to reduce cost, reduce square footage, and, and provide that affordable option without sacrifice. So an example of, you know, our, our, our level one, level two, in the middle is the, is the clubhouse that provides our dining services, a couple of private offices in a, in a bistro opportunity. The second floor, it replicates what the first floor is in terms of neighborhoods. We have six neighborhoods of sixteen. Each have a different theme. It could be a bar bistro. It could be a library. It could be activities. On the left, you see it's set up on top as it would be during the day. And then during, during the day or at evening, it turns into a theater. So we're utilizing square footage, not wasting square footage. Many communities that you look at today, they'll have private dining, not used. They'll have big, common dining areas that are used for two to three hours. A lot of wasted square footage, a lot of wasted cost for utilities. We also, for safety purposes, put all the utilities on the outside. You see some, some boxes on the, on the, the lower, you know, the, the shadowed boxes. That's where the utilities, water are from. So we don't have to have, you know, people walking through, walking through the neighborhoods of our community. This is an example of what the assisted living, memory care looks like. These are units. These are, these are three hundred and fifty square foot units with, with private restroom. These are private rooms, not, not semi-private. These are private rooms. And they're set up, and they could be set up, there's, there's different ways we can set it up. You've got a large, large closet, but you can set up a queen bed and, and furniture around it. But the whole idea is to bring people out of, of their environment. And much like you would in your homes, you come out of your bedroom, you go into your living room. And, and you enjoy the outdoors. And this is an example of the hybrid homes, what, what the independent living homes would look like in the, in the courtyard area, along with floor plans there. We would give the independent living three different options of floor plans, two bedroom and two different one bedroom options with islands and for, for choice for the independent living. Pricing is unique. It's all inclusive. We don't have any debate and switch. We, we will, we will be, we will competitively shop in the market, and we will be a thousand dollars per month less than the competition in the area. And that is, you know, it's through how our model is built, how we operate it, how we staff it, and how we feed our residents. And then operationally, this is not a first timer. So American Healthcare Management, they run fourteen other communities nationwide and have been doing this for over twenty years. And they, they bring a team of expertise, not a first time team. So we have brought this operational model from other communities and, and the Best Practices Group. And really the philosophy for seniors is to provide freedom. And what we do is just say yes. It's our core philosophy. And, and if you want to have bacon and eggs at four o'clock in the afternoon, yes. An example of that, my mom, when she, when I moved her to a community, her routine before I moved her was get up about nine thirty, ten o'clock, ease into the day with a robe on, English muffin, and a cup of hot tea. When I moved her into a senior community, she got up at seven thirty, they awoke her at seven thirty, showered her, brought her down to a table that she sat at every day, had bacon, eggs, and coffee at eight o'clock in the morning. She didn't want, she didn't like it. It's not how she lived. So we took a lot of these ideas, how, how I provided for my mom, how I wanted to provide for my mom, and took those lessons forward in terms of how people live. And, and Ron, you could, you could say, basically, we want to build for you. We want to build and listen for the residents of the community and respect and that honor, preparing fresh meals every day. And that's a, that's a big part of not, if, if all of us went to, went out to eat right now, I guarantee we wouldn't have the same meal. Why should we expect that in the senior community? So you order what you want, when you want, how you want, and that's how we prepare it. And believe it or not, there's cost savings with that because we don't have as much waste with food by, by creating one big dish for lunch, one big dish for breakfast. Our team of experience, we are ten companies coming together. So development wise, we have, we have built collectively over seventy-eight communities nationwide over twenty-five years. So we're pulling the Best Practices Group from our team of talent and providing that expertise to Elevate Senior Living. And then for Valley Center, what we do, we are neighbors, but we're also new neighbors. We need to include the Chamber of Commerce, the, the job training programs, the senior transportation, the, the home, the home care networks, and, and really embrace that, understand that. We are new neighbors. And what we do a great deal of too is, is we have a founders group, something unique about our staffing, is we have a founders group with that. We have a booster club, Family Booster Club. A lot of us have had, you know, kids that were, you know, going up through grade school, high school, that were, that were at barbecues, cooking, cooking burgers and everything else. Supporting that. We want to do that for our seniors. And we have a, a, a program that, that, that families sign up for. They, they just assist with little tasks around the community. But it gets them engaged, much like your booster clubs at your schools. We take that same concept and approach in senior living. I love that because when I went to visit my mom, I didn't want to just sit in her room. We came out. I grabbed my tennis shoes. I said, hey, mom, let's take a walk. And suddenly, you know, every, you know, every time I came with the tennis shoes, I would have four or five other ladies walking behind me and taking a walk. So I, I became the walking guy. That's what we want to create, is those activities that come naturally, that we can share with, with our, with our presidents. In our typical model with Elevate Senior Living, we'd create an LLC, and we would have ownership in it. We would have a portion ownership in it. And what I'm excited with talking to Brett and his team is we have the opportunity to attract and interest Valley Center community partners and looking at having an event, you know, perhaps in, in October, November timeframe of, you know, having the opportunity for local, local people to participate and be part of Elevate Senior Living. And we'd much, you know, much love that, that opportunity to do that. Elevate is a consortium of, of ten, ten firms coming together to do better. And, but to do better, we need support. We need, we need help. And that's where it'll be, it'll be fun talking about the investment opportunities within, within senior. So our turnkey team, there's not just one of us, there's a group of us. So what that group looks like from the upper left down, it's American Healthcare Management Group. That's Joe Jasmine. I'm with Spellman-Brady and Company, the second logo down. He and I are co-founders of Elevate Senior Living. But we pull in a contractor, Arco. We've got Merrick, who provides millwork. We've got Roseman, who's an architect. HFG, a local architect here that, that can do the, the contract documents. Centrix is our technology provider. Marsh McClellan provides our insurance. And Stefan's accounting provides our accounting services. So these are people that we bring to the table to check all the boxes. And, and this is, we work for behalf of Elevate Senior Living, but we are paid by our companies, not by Elevate Senior Living. So we don't have the corporate, you know, kind of the corporate fat of other communities because we work for our companies, not for Elevate, but we work on behalf of Elevate. So that is a quick, quick scenario. And I invite any questions.
Yeah? I've got a few for you here.
Yes.
Um, how many, I didn't hear it if I missed it. How many units or how many people would this location be able to house?
We're proposing right around a hundred and sixty, a hundred and sixty and a hundred and eighty. And we'll look at that. So ninety-six assisted living, memory care.
Okay. And that was my next question. So it's, it's, it's multi-level as far as assisted living and there's, there will be full-time care, memory care unit?
Yeah. So what we do typically, and how we would build, we'd build it in phases. We'd build probably, the, the first phase would be the independent living. That fills up quicker. And actually, the independent living is really kind of a feeder, oops, feeder for. Okay. Oh, there you go. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So the, the, the assistant, oops, there we go. So the assisted living on the left would be the hybrid homes, and they typically fill them faster done. And, but then while we're doing that, on the right-hand side, we're building the assisted living and memory care unit with the clubhouse. That takes a little bit longer to open because of licensing. We don't have licensing requirements for the independent living.
Okay. Answered a few of these. Will there be local management?
Yes. Yeah. So American Healthcare Management oversees all the management, but we bring on an executive director, who would be local and be at the community. We would have, really, we would have about forty to fifty local jobs created with this. And, but the core team, the executive director, the director of sales and marketing, the director of nursing and healthcare, those are core positions, housekeeping, maintenance, those are core positions. We call them team leads. And those, those would be, they would be team leads that would be local, local people.
Okay. That was, that led into another question was about the jobs.
Yeah. And we, we kind of tie into the job training programs, you know, the Kansas Works and others, Akron Connects is another, and looking at, you know, job training for, for caregivers, job training for maintenance, job training for lawn, job training for activities and housekeeping and marketing. So looking at those opportunities, because there's, there's really kind of a crisis right now for staffing. We want to build on that. And you've got a wonderful opportunity locally here for job training to create jobs, but train those. And then those that we like, we can hire.
I know we have a lot of local people who go outside our community because they don't have the opportunity that are in assisted living, healthcare environments. And I know that would be attractive to them.
And we'd also tie into the schools, you know, the choirs, the activities. And it's, it's really kind of an all hands on deck. We would have once, once we get about six months before construct, before we open, we would have community meetings. And in those community meetings, we, we, you know, it's like welcome your neighbor. So we, we would have it in a variety of spots around town and just listen, listen to residents, earn their trust, answer their questions, and, and become a new.
What, uh, what's the construction time to get the first, the independent living open?
We look at about a, you know, constructions usually sluggish, but I would say about eighteen months.
Okay. And then from that point, at what point would we have everything open?
Eighteen, about twenty-one months. So with, you know, eighteen to twenty-one months, and that, that lag is usually, the, the community is open. And we go through the licensing. An interesting part, we did, it took advantage of in Clearwater. While we were waiting for licensing, eleven of us moved in for a resident for a day. And I was a eighty-six year old individual with my fingers taped together, glaucoma glasses, walker, and ankle braces, and lived that way for a day, just to understand care, food, the, the environment, and what we can do to improve. And that's something that we will, we'll do over and over again.
Okay. And a couple more. Sorry, I've taken up all this time. This would be a multi-level building, correct?
Yeah. On, on the right, that would be a two-story building. The AL Memory Care would be a two-story building. On the left, we'd be looking at either a three to four story.
Okay. And I assume by code, they have elevators and?
Yes.
Oh, yes. I know that's probably a.
You will require, it'll have two, we'll have two elevators in the, in the AL Memory Care building, the C-shaped and the elbows off to the right, and one elevator each in the hybrid homes.
Okay. I had a technical. We hadn't had a lot of time to look over this because we'd received this this evening, but we were missing number five in the letter. I had paragraph number five, unless I'm seeing something. It goes three, four, six.
Okay.
We can. And I just wanted to ask about that before we get into talking about the specifics of it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Sorry, I'll jump back in your room. I apologize. I just can't count.
So there's nothing omitted. The numbering is just wrong.
And, and what this is for this evening is just a letter of intent. So what, you know, this is kind of the first step of a MOU type of, but more, if you recall on this property with Mr. Larry Rowley, you know, we signed a letter of intent with the developer at the time, which was Lou Rebelli. This is very similar to that. And so this is a letter of intent saying, hey, you know, here's kind of the formal announcement. We're gonna start working out the details, and then we'll come back to the council with more formalized, formalized document that kind of really spells out everything. And so, you know, if you've been out there, you know, there's still a lot of work that needs to be done before we can even start turning shovels. But one of the big things that Bruce mentioned was really coming up with the rest of that equity here locally. You know, and this is Valley Center. You know, we, we love to have our own community pride, our own community engagement with our residents and our current folks in the community that might be interested in having equity in a project like this. And so of course, you know, having the council, you know, kind of sign off on this letter of intent is the first step. Then you go to the equity side. Then we come back with a formalized agreement for the mayor and council to review and potentially approve. And SEH is working on phase two as we speak, which includes the infrastructure in this area. And so that's tentatively. Jake, what timeframe are we looking at with infrastructure?
Yeah. So in terms of what we've prepared in term for infrastructure plans, we've got those just about ready to submit to the city for review. So that would be something that the developer and then current contractor could then turn around and start working on it. If the developer chooses to look forward with it. And you as a city are part of that development team having projects.
Yeah. So it was really perfect timing for all the stars to align and to make this the best site possible for Elevate and the partnership with the city and Elevate to locate here. So that's kind of a quick rundown on the letter of intent and I apologize for my four, six. So I was probably thinking four, six, seven, eight. That's a dance.
Ron, you got a question?
Yeah. No, go ahead. I'll come back. I, I was done for now. Yeah, I'll let you, I'll let you all get it. Sorry.
About three quarters. One is. Would they be all around the building?
They'd be in specific areas. Yeah. So basically it'll be, architecturally we'll have the appropriate amount of for staff. It'll be in the rear. So independent living, you'll be close. There you go. You see the, the areas are indicated. So independently on the, on the left-hand side, Ron, are the independent living units where you see on the, on the other side of the circular drive, you've got parking spaces on either side, close by. On the right-hand side, the assisted living and memory care, typically there's seniors, there's not a lot that are driving in the assisted living and memory care. So we, those staffing spots are available, but they're primarily for the staff and visitors. A lot of visitors for.
Can we blow that up, Benny? Sorry.
Yeah, I think we've got 1.25 parking spaces required. 180 total spaces.
Are, are they indoor type?
No. But that's something we talked about is they won't be indoor. We talked about that. They could be covered. Right now they're not, but that's, that's up for discussion and planning and budgeting.
Would you have a walking trail around the project?
Yes. Yeah. We want to have a walking trail. Dogs, you know, dogs and pets, especially dogs, you know, have a little dog trail, walking trail for, for, we, we tried a dog park, but quite honestly, we want people walking around the sidewalks at the trails and, and taking advantage of that.
You say you have medical personnel.
We have an individual, she's the director of healthcare. So she's responsive to all the needs and the medications. And we set it up, we set up your personal plan for you. So you have your set of doctors, you have your set of, of medications and everything. So we put together a plan based on what your needs are and tie into the locals. So a lot of times we'll have physicians come, come to the community to provide care or we would have transportation for you to go. But we're, we're involved in that process. So we, we're kind of tailor making the system for you. Yes. Yeah. We, we would, that staffed the director of healthcare position. Now that, that one individual's not there around the clock, but we have caregivers 24/7.
You showed diagram on the.
Yeah. They're all individual rooms, 350 square feet. They're really designed for a queen bed and maybe a chair or a sofa in there. But the whole idea of the rooms are, Ron, is, is like your room at home. That you go there to sleep, but they, you come out for the activities. You come out to eat, you come out to play cards, you come out for the activities. Did that answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah. And the whole idea there, we don't have a double-sided corridor. Okay? So we have an open space. You come out like you would at home. You open, you come out of your bedroom and you go right into your living room. That living room is your activity space. So what we want to be is 22 steps to activity. We don't want to, we don't want anyone walking down a long corridor. No one wants that. Right. Right. Because in, in how we got, and quite honestly, how we got to 22 steps, not scientifically, but Joe's mom, we noticed in, in taking tours and everything, she got a little cranky and tired after 22 steps. So we, you know, we kind of noticed that. We're like, okay, we need to develop, divide a program around how people live. Well, that's why I give you my card. I'd be happy to answer.
Trying to get this.
Yeah.
For the last two and a half years, three years.
Yeah. We, we would love to tap into your knowledge and invite any conversation that you'd have. I give you my card and we could, we could answer any question. But that's, that's part of the, the community meetings that we would have and just open it up for everybody to answer questions. Many times when we start, people have their arms crossed and, you know, the new neighbor, but then we have to earn their respect and give them information and, and, you know, make them feel good about the opportunities in front of them. Yes.
Of all that area there, would there be?
Uh, we haven't planned one yet, but we're still in planning. If we, we could have a shuttle, we could have transportation. We, we want to tie in to, to the rec center and everything else around there. So we'll find a way to get you there.
And thanks for reading.
Thank you.
The answer is yes, Ron, on that. And so on the, on the trail system that's around, you see ponds, each pond has a trail that's around it for the development. And then that will connect on the, on the backside of the rec center. So some of that Bruce probably doesn't know as far as the internal trail system on Harvest Place, but there is definitely a trail that will go to the rec center from here.
Kind of tied your, the answer is yes. I'd write into it, but that's, you know.
Do you have a question?
The answer is yes. Any other questions?
Yeah.
Oh, I'll add one question.
Yes.
Do you see plans of maybe doing some lawn care? Or is it just going to be assisted living?
Assisted living and memory care. We're not licensed. We're not, we're not licensed for that. But we would, you know, for skilled care is what you're referring to. We would have sister communities that we would partner with when the need arises that, that we could make partnerships with. But a lot of, quite honestly, it's, it's aging in place and bringing the services in. And that's what we could talk about and build a, build that plan for, for the residents.
Amy?
Hi, I have two quick questions. First of all, I love this idea. I think we need it. I have a nursing background, so I'm really curious. It's hard to staff these facilities. What kind of staff retention rates do you have at your current communities and how do you keep, keep your employees?
Great question. Great question. So we, we, that's where the family booster club comes in to take a lot of the pressure off. And, you know, and just we noticed just, there's a lot asked of a caregiver. And, you know, whether it's, you know, taking, taking a resident to the restroom and feeding them and bathing them. That's where the, the booster club helps out greatly with activities, with just helping peel the apples for the apple pie, with filling the iced teas around the, the lunch table, just that little bit. And those are organized activities for the booster club that they sign up for. That it's, it's, you know, we want two-hour shifts for the booster club and that just helps the caregiver take a little bit of that stress off because that's a stressful job. And we need to do what we can to help support that. And that's where the job training also comes in. We want to train younger individuals to be familiar with it, with, with caregiving and, and be part of the process and help that too. So it's kind of a, it's a community effort, all, all hands on deck and however we can support because retention's tough. So we have to have, you know, support, care and, and walk in our community is a lot of the happy faces that you see helps. It helps with staffing in a, in a beautiful environment. But the just say yes attitude and, and philosophy that we have helps ease it because we're not on a regimented schedule like some others have it. We say, we don't have senior hurting, which means a lot of communities will bring everybody together before they see them for dinner at 4:30. And then they feed them dinner and then off they go. We're not in a hurry. We, we don't, we don't have that. So that's a lot of stress. We take the stress of feeding 96, we divide it into teams of 16 and neighborhoods of 16. So it's a lot easier to care for 16 people than it is 96. So just working the numbers and the ratios to make it less stressful.
Do you work with like local technical colleges with like CNA students, that kind of thing?
Yes. 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 All the job training and students and, and support and training and education, those are things that interest us about, about Valley Center. And having those resources around, you know, activities, you know, having the musical programs choir and all the talents of the community and bringing, you know, we, we want to be part of the community. We don't build a community and shut down the walls. We open the doors.
I have one more question. When I was in the market for my mother-in-law, you talked about this all-inclusive and everywhere we went around here, it was, here's the fee, but if they're incontinent, it's this much more. If they have protein shakes every day, it's this much more. And, and it went on and on and on. Are you saying none of that is?
None of that.
Part of this?
None of that. Because we've lived it. I did it with my mom. Joe did it with his mom. No. So we, we, to do, we're, we're going to, it's not a nickel and dime. We have a price. We set it. It's not a bait and switch tactic. And there's just so much confusion out there when you're looking at communities, you're shopping them, you don't know what you're paying. And, and there, there, there are opportunities to have different meals if they want to eat, you know, in the restaurant, they can do that. If they want to use salon services, they can do that. But all of, those are expected, the, some of the things that you were mentioning, those are expected services that, that are required for living.
Thank you.
Yeah? All right, I'm back. One follow-up for this. Have you ever sold any of the communities that you've built after you built them?
No.
Okay. Cause that's an important thing to me because my next thing is actually going to be for Brent. And I know you're going to get into the nuts and bolts of this. I, I'm worried about a company coming in, receiving benefits from the city and then selling that facility. That, that's something that, that worries me, especially in our community. Protecting, protecting it and not just companies coming in, making a buck and moving on. So that's where I wanted to get with Brent on.
Understand. And, and just in context, so Elevate Senior Living, we have one community open currently in Clearwater, Florida. That opened in April of, of 24. And we have five, five others in planning and development, including Valley Center. Okay? Our goal is to provide and do better. And, and we can't do that. And quite honestly, the people that want to buy these, they want to buy 15 to 20 of them and they use it as a spreadsheet. It's an investment vehicle for the REITs. We're not built that way. We don't have the corporate overhead. That's how we, we can provide a product that doesn't have that much of the corporate overhead. So we don't benefit from that.
And you said you have one, one facility open that's Elevate. All of those other ones you showed were partner. You had a whole list of, of locations.
Of developments. Those, those that represented been the development experience that we've had.
Okay.
Over the years. But with Elevate, we are the, a team creating Elevate only, Elevate Senior Living.
Okay. So those were a list of.
So.
Developments, but not necessarily the.
Yeah. This, this is a list of the operations, just, you know, it's really the context here is just to let you know that we haven't done this once. These are operations that are currently under agreement. American Healthcare Management manages these different communities with the concept and where it came from is, is the whole, we can do better is the frustration of Joe and American Healthcare Management operating inefficient buildings. He said, if we did this, we could be efficient. If we did this, we could be affordable. If we did this, we could provide better. So that's from all these experiences, these communities. These are all foundations for Elevate.
I have some more questions, but I'll let Brent do his thing.
Oh, and so this is, you know, one of the reasons why we, you know, chose Elevate as well is because of the way that they're set up. You know, they're not, you know, just a, a group of owners. You know, they also sit on the boards of these other homes. And so like the Elevate in Clearwater, you know, they're part of the board. They're not the only owners, sole owners. It's the equity that's locally controlled as well that sit on the board directors. And so, you know, for them to sell, you know, a, a home like Valley Center or Clearwater, I mean, it's going to take the locals that have equity in that to also make that decision as well. Now, you know, you can never say never. I mean, you know, you don't know 20 years from now or, you know, 15 years from now. But the best part of this is that once you get the bricks and mortar, you know, in the ground and you're established here, you know, that's a taxpaying entity. You know, there are a lot of senior living complexes that are not taxpaying entities. They're tax exempt, as well as, you know, creating those additional jobs. Those jobs will stay. That investment stays here. But also, you know, have an opportunity for our local Valley Center residents that they want to participate in the equity side. You know, it'll be their decision if they want to sell as well. I mean, that's, I think, a big part of why, you know, Kyle and I have been working and Ryan before Kyle on, on finding the perfect fit for Valley Center. Cause we've had some opportunities with other companies, but none that are set up and structured like Elevate. And so that's what really excites us is that local ownership, because that's what we pride ourselves on.
We're a minority. You know, that's getting into the game here. We're a minority ownership group, much like Brett mentioned. We want to have that, the local, the local groups investing and be part of the community.
Okay. Clint, can you go back to the overview of the, that has the rec center on it and this parcel?
Right there. Oh, yeah. I think we had.
Yeah. Brent, we still have another piece of land left then, is that correct? Okay.
That's for us.
I just wanted to make sure. So what this agreement is doing is, is basically a handshake deal, but we, we are gifting that land to them, correct?
Potentially.
Okay.
Gifting that land. And so this is a letter of intent. It expires in December. It just gives an opportunity for equity. In order to donate the piece of property, you'll have to come, you know, before you with a formalized agreement, purchase agreement, just like we did with the school when we sold it for a dollar. But that's kind of what we're leading with so then they can do their financial performance as well. And so it's that six acres right there on that northeast side of what we own, that 30 acres. And so, you know, roughly the estimated value, I think it was 186,000. And so that's not a decision that you're voting on to donate that specifically tonight. It's just a letter of intent that we're exploring the opportunity to donate that potential.
Okay. I, I have to be honest, we haven't had a lot of time to look over this.
Absolutely.
And I understand presentation tonight answered a lot of questions. When I first read this, I was like, we're absolutely not giving land away. But when we started looking at this and, and having lived here my entire life, that has been the one thing is the people that have to move out of Valley Center as they age. Having worked at the, with the seniors and the senior center for the past, however long it's been, decade, that is, that's what's hard to see is people that are forced out of town. To me, this is no different and, and we're obviously not agreeing on anything tonight. But this is no different than giving the school land to build an elementary school. Cause we are harnessing the need, you know, we, we talk about the kids and the schools, that's the young side of our community. And we have, we have lacked taking care of the aging side of our community. I, I really am excited about this project because there are so many opportunities for the community to work with this group and this, this project. I'll speak less, I'm sorry, but I, I like this idea and thank you for your presentation.
Thank you. And Kelsey, my mercy, you know, it's one of the things, you know, we're not quite used to, you know, we haven't had, you know, a lot of economic development opportunities besides builders for source and those things. And this is kind of how you roll it out, you know, is with the public transparency side of it, of a letter of intent, doesn't lock you into anything, but also allows to start talking about it, generate that excitement and the opportunity. So then Elevate and those folks, you know, they can start hitting the ground and, and grinding in the streets and seeing who wants to potentially invest locally, who wants to potentially invest in this project without this, the, you know, the council, without the city, you know, signing up for anything, any permanent financing or anything yet, locking us into anything right now, that will come later. Uh, any permanent, uh, financing or anything yet, locking us into anything right now, that will come later. And so really, you know, it's like an MOU, but when it comes with ground, it's a letter of intent. Uh, the ground that we do own, uh, north of the Aquatic Center, uh, just south of Northwind Drive. I know that's really crystal clear to, to read. Um, but, uh, that would be hopefully, you know, for future city facilities that we've talked about, uh, you know, we do need a new public safety building. It's not coming anytime soon. Uh, nowhere, not coming anytime, but, you know, Planet for the Future, that's the logical place, uh, right along Meridian, uh, for public safety, uh, City Hall and, and some type of city campus. But that's for down the road. Uh, and so we're saving that area. Uh, but again, that's not coming anytime, anytime, anytime soon.
Okay. I have one comment before we, you can sit down. It's all right. Cause it's just a comment. I was involved in senior living, senior housing for six, six years. Uh, I was a facilities manager. I dealt with the corporate not heads in Chicago and every place else. Uh, so if this letter of intent gets approved, I want to be hands-on with this project. So as much as you guys will allow me to be.
The corporate not head fee or the corporate not heads. We don't have corporate.
Uh, that's, that's good. But I still have a lot of questions that don't need to be asked here tonight. So.
I'd welcome, uh, the opportunity we could set up, uh, more, more questions and answers at, uh, future event.
I plan on setting up a few for the public anyway before.
Yes.
Yeah. Before it even gets brought to the council for approval. I would like to see it.
Yep. That's what we already mentioned this evening. Yep. The October, November, uh, potentially events.
Okay. All right. Well, if there's no other questions or comments, we'll, uh, take a motion to approve the letter of intent.
Move to enter to letter of intent with Elevate Senior Living and authorized mayor or city administrator to sign.
Second.
Have a motion as second to approve the letter of intent. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify raising your right hand. All opposed, same sign, motion carried. Thank you very much. And item B. Chamber request for the fall garage sales, sign waiver.
Good evening. Um, before you, I have a request to waive the, um, R O W, the right-of-way for the garage sale signs for this fall citywide garage sales, which will be October second, third, and fourth, the first, um, weekend in October.
Any questions or comments? Get a motion to approve.
Motion to approve waiver, the placement, uh, in the public right-of-way of sign regulations for the twenty twenty-five fall citywide garage sales from October second through October fifth.
Second. Have a motion as second to approve the request for the garage sale waiver, garage sale sign waiver. Any further discussion or questions? All in favor of the motion, signify raising your right hand. All opposed, same sign, motion carried.
Thank you so much.
Moving on to ordinance fourteen thirty-three dash twenty-five, the rezone of five twenty-five South Abilene.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, this request, uh, went through planning and zoning last week. Um, this is a parcel that was a lot split, uh, several months ago, um, off of, if you're aware of Kimmy, Kimmy's Canine Cuts. She split off the back portion of her property and sold it. The purchaser, um, is requesting a rezone. So when it was split, the lot was C two, and so currently it is a C two, uh, general business district lot. Uh, the owner of the lot is now wanting, uh, to, uh, rezone to R one B and build a single-family home on this property. Um, the, it, it's right against and right across the street from residential lots. Uh, the lot size is a different shape and a little bit larger than some of those residential lots. Um, along with the rezone, they also were approved for variance, um, by planning and zoning, as long as the rezone goes through. Um, to have a narrower lot width there, it's not a much, a drastic difference in lot width, but the minimum has to be sixty feet at the setback line. It's like fifty-nine point something. So they approved that variance as well. Um, part of, some of the comments were that, um, it'd be a better suited for a residence there than a business, uh, especially because of the, the size of the lot. Um, we did have one person call, um, before the hearing, just kind of asking for intent of, um, of the applicant. He did not say he was in favor or, uh, opposed to the rezoning. Um, and then during the public hearing, um, there was no opposition, uh, to this. Um, so I'm bringing forward the recommendation from planning and zoning, uh, to approve the rezone, uh, from C two to R one B, uh, and recommending approval of first reading of that ordinance.
Any questions or comments?
Motion to approve first reading of ordinance one four three three dash two five, the rezone of vacant lot located at five two five South Abilene to, from C two to R one B.
Second. Have a motion as second to approve first reading for ordinance fourteen thirty-three dash twenty-five. Any further discussion, questions? All in favor of the motion, signify raising your right hand. All opposed, same sign, motion carried. Moving on to ordinance number fourteen thirty-four dash twenty-five, special use permit for two oh one South Cedar.
All right. Good evening again. Um, so this lot specifically is the old, uh, Martin Solvents, um, facility. Most people, um, are aware, are aware of, of, of that as we, as a reference point. Back in roughly May, city staff had noticed that, um, pallets had started arriving at that facility. In early June, we reached out to the property owner and business, um, and set up a meeting and had a meeting with them to go over, um, regulations that needed to be complied with, um, for this business to be in compliance with, um, zoning code, building code, um, and fire code. Uh, since then, um, as you can see up on the screen, the applicants, um, have submitted a site plan for their intended, uh, layout um, of the properties. So one of the, uh, issues that had came up during fires inspection was having, um, fire pallet stacked, uh, a certain, they can only have so many, um, stacked together and they have to have a break in them. So those are depicted by, um, several of the, uh, squares towards the bottom of the page, um, towards the top on the, uh, left. Yeah, left side. Uh, no, sorry, right side for you. Um, I went backwards. I think I am. The squares, the, the white part is the building across from that. Thank you, Clint, over there by your house. Uh, they have brought in two portable buildings. There's a shed and an office building that they have. That would also need to be, uh, anchored appropriately, um, with the active special uses approved. They have, um, renovations that they're making to the inside of the building that also need to, uh, come into compliance. So anyway, with that meeting, uh, they have been working, uh, to make some of these improvements. Uh, some of them are slower than others. For instance, um, they cannot, they're currently operating mostly outside of the building because they are having to have electrical plans drawn up by an engineer and go through planner view before we can, uh, make their three-phase power live to the building so that they can move their machinery inside. So lots of moving parts of this, um, this business. During the hearing, uh, one of the concerns actually leading up to, I had several phone calls and emails regarding dust in the area. At the public hearing that actually the day of, um, I was made aware that the business across the street, their dust collection system happened to malfunction the week that the notices of the hearing went out. Um, and so the dust that was all over, if you had gotten any calls or emails about it, um, the dust had actually been coming from across the road. Their, uh, collection system had malfunctioned. Um, if you drive over there, there is still actually dust on top of that collection system that had came out. And there's some on the roof of that building across the way, um, that still has yet to, um, be brushed off. Um, but to our knowledge, we have not had any complaints, um, since the first week of August. And so I believe that, uh, issue has been fixed. Other issues that were brought up or other concerns brought up during the public hearing, the, the biggest, uh, concern that was brought up was fire, uh, danger. Um, by multiple people, um, there are residential homes to the north of this. Uh, there are other commercial facilities, um, to the east, south, and west. Um, so part of the site plan, part of fire plans, fires, uh, requests is to have these breaks in pallets. So that way, if there is a fire that were to spark on site, that if a pallet were to, or a group of house were to catch on fire, they'd have a break to slow down the spread of the fire, would give fire, uh, fires the opportunity to get around a pile, um, easier. Um, another thing that had brought up was with this being pallet facility, they do mulch some of the wood, um, on site. However, they do not intend to store it thus far. They've been mulching into a, uh, end dump trailer and hauling it off. They have several places where they're able to donate that. So they're not having to store it on site until they find a home for it. They're able to haul it away so that they're not storing mulch on site. Um, currently, I will say though, there is a fairly large pile of mulch and they worked with, um, myself and fire to make arrangements. They had a very, very large pile of pallets on site, um, that they needed to destroy. And instead of taking weeks to break those down, they asked about bringing, they brought in a industrial shredder and worked with fire to, get approved to get, get it mulched and hauled away. So as of right now, pending, um, equipment cooperating, um, they are, I believe, maybe eighty percent mulched, roughly. Um, and they hope to have the mulching process complete tomorrow and begin haul off on Friday. So that way that mulch is not being stored there, um, at all. As far as, um, staff, other staff comments, uh, with the special use, we had recommended that, one, the special use is not, um, issued or approved until they are in compliance with all the regulations that we've laid out for them. Um, and then the special use would be contingent upon there being, um, quarterly compliance inspections by the fire department. And then if the business or the property were to sell, they have to notify the zoning administrator of that change so that the next ownership can be, we, we as staff would make sure that the next owner would be aware of all the regulations that they're required to meet. And so those, those were the, the two conditions. But apparently there's three because one condition is it wouldn't be officially approved until they meet all regulations that fire, um, zoning and, uh, building, um, code requirements have been met. So I did kind of highlight this, that the fire problem was the biggest thing spoken about by neighbors. There was also discussion about noise from the facility. And one neighbor did say that she like, has, she can hear this, the shredder, but she said it didn't necessarily bother her, if that makes sense. Trying to think of other comments that were made, but, um, fire was the big, oh, and then the unsightliness of the, the property. But again, they're working on cleaning up the, the big pallet pile. Um, I did send Clint some pictures. If you could pull those up. Just, these were taken today. Um, so if you didn't have a chance to drive by there today, uh, this is just kind of current state from when you're at the road. So this is from their parking area, looking onto the facility. Um, that is one of the piles of mulch. Um, those two buildings there are the portable buildings that have been brought on site that will need to be appropriately anchored and appropriately spaced from each other, um, to ensure compliance with building regulations and fire regulations. You can go to the next one. This is just shifted a little bit left. It's a little dark up on the screen up here. But that pallet pile that's behind that dumpster was, um, more of a mountain at the, before they started shredding. It was, um, considerably taller. I don't know, Lloyd, did you see it? Was it probably, I would say it was probably twenty feet tall? It was, it was fairly large. Like I said, they are actively mulching to come into, to, uh, work on getting that offsite. And this is just kind of another angle to kind of show more of that mulch pile to the right, um, of that equipment. So again, current standard or current state, um, Bill did, our building inspector did walk through the property today. He said that they have stacks of pallets at the entry had decreased. Some of them were still solid stacks and not having that gap that was required, but, um, it's just some changes he noticed. Pallets were still stacked on the loading dock, but the quantities were less. Um, first, so there's three areas of the building. First area has a few pallets of wood stored. Second room had stacks of cut wood on pallets as well as a worker working. Um, third room has stacked of pallets in active work environment. Part of this review is that part of the building is sprinkled, part of the building is not. Um, so to get into compliance because of the way they're using the building, the entire building is required to be sprinkled. So they have, uh, engaged with, uh, fire protection services to expand their sprinkler system to cover the entire building. Um, including the loading dock. And that's one of the reasons Bill mentioned the loading dock in, in this. The exit, there was an exit last time Bill was there that had been blocked. That exit is now open as requested and required. Um, stacks of pallets have decreased and an attempt was made at separation between double wide stacks. Pallets have been stacked approximately seven linear feet tall. Um, and I believe fire told them six or two was required. Exterior pallets have been drastically reduced and piles seen in the picture. Um, they should be, as mentioned, should be mulched hopefully by tomorrow and then begin hauling away. Um, Bill did note, excuse me, there are some inoperable vehicles on site. There is, uh, pallet, or sorry, pallets of stacked cardboard are on the south side of the gate. Um, and then he just mentioned for the building piece, electrical plans have been submitted to M A B C D planner view. So the electrical plans for the building are being reviewed by M A B C D right now. Uh, we are still waiting on plans to be submitted for, uh, life and fire safety concerns. So the sprinkler system and the smoke vents for the building, um, still have to go under review, um, which kind of ties into an agreement that we have later on the agenda for, um, for fire, uh, reviews. Uh, and then, uh, council member Gregory did bring to my attention that I missed an attachment. I referenced that there was a, um, a letter of opposition, um, attached and it was not attached. I was just going to read it real briefly. This, so this was again, before this, we figured out the sawdust issue was from next door. The company has not controlled the sawdust produced by cutting pallets. It is all over my property and at times it's visible in the air. And howling sawdust myself or my pets is very hazardous. If pallets are treated for insects of decay prevention, then the dust is an extreme health hazard. I ask that you deny the application due to this being an immediate danger to the public. I'm sending photos, um, which I believe several of you had received this email potentially, um, and he had attached some photos of, of dust covering vehicles and porches and things like that. So that was the letter of opposition that was received. Um, and again, uh, we had found out that it was actually the business next door's dust collection system that had failed. So I'm bringing forward to you this evening, uh, oh, by the way, the applicant, or applicants, the owner and the business operator are, um, both here this evening. Um, the recommendation from planning and zoning is to approve the site, the special use permit pending, uh, them coming into compliance. So basically delaying the actual issuance of that special use permit until they're in compliance with fire, building, and zoning regulations. And then a special use then also would have, again, the quarterly safety inspections required by fire, uh, as well as, uh, ownership change being, uh, made, notice made to planning administrator, uh, or sorry, zoning administrator. So that we can make sure that any new ownership was aware of the regulations that they fall under for this business. And I should mention, I forgot to mention, our industrial zoning district, um, does, so the business across the street does have, does use wood and, and building products. Um, and I believe they make pallets and maybe some other items. Um, but theirs is all new stock, um, on site. This business is bringing in, as we've seen, you know, stacks of pallets that are used and they're, um, rebuilding them to make good pallets again and sending out, which is not an approved use in our, um, zoning code, uh, zoning district. And so that's why we're requesting a special use permit. permit and then the choice is other for pallet recycling because in the other or in the special use we don't spell out how recycling either as a proof use so. I would stand for any questions I know this is very interesting and different than most of our zoning cases but.
I just have a comment I want to make a comment because I was at the planning commission meeting the residents were there they were their major concern was the dust and if found out it wasn't this business their second major concern was the fire hazards this company has gone out of its way to keep its grass mode killed off so the grass is not there but if there was a fire there it would be it controlled the best we could ashes and soot could get over in the right of way of the railroad and that was their concern because the railroad does not take care of that you know that weeds and trees growing so that was a concern that we basically I think Brent pretty well put it in perspective that God will probably get a better response than we do with the railroad but I don't know if we could work with the railroad as far as you send them a nasty letter maybe we ought to have compliance send them a fine or something just just to see what happens be like whether you honk the horns more going through town probably so anyway that's that the residents left here Tuesday night pretty satisfied with what they're concerned the person that wrote the letter talked to me directly after the meeting and said that they they appreciated what what they found out so and they have gotten rid of a lot of pallets because I drove by there today and it wasn't near the powder was Tuesday night so they're working on them. That's all I have. Amy.
Yeah I have a few questions this being in my ward I I had a lot of people reach out to me. I do understand that the desk that day could have or likely came from another facility but several had asked if the K D H E had been contacted. I noticed in the like the zoning permit it says manufacturing which does not expel nauseous or gets offensive by reason of vibration noise dust fumes gas odor or smoke so I feel like it needs to be looked at by the K D H E to make sure that there is no health hazard because some left comforted after or feeling better after that meeting but some didn't and and they called me and my other big concern is the I I saw in the letter that the city wrote to the owners that that a site first a special use app was due by June twenty fourth that didn't get turned in till July eleventh that concerns me. The second thing they asked for is a site plan with a timeline due July fourteenth and I don't see or maybe I've missed it I don't see any kind of timeline they're talking about half a building with no sprinklers they're talking about exit signs that aren't lit up and right now we have two huge piles of mulch which the fire captain said six days ago is highly combustible and that's what happened at the pallet facilities in Park City so I appreciate that they're bringing jobs into the city but I more appreciate that our residents feel safe in their own homes so I won't support this.
I would just address if unless that's alright right now a timeline has not been submitted just to address your concern on that we have been contacted by the engineers on this so we know that they're working on it and again it is in plan review. I think with the uniqueness of retrofitting the building it's taking a little longer to get some of those plans created as the zoning administrator and and over the inspections I would have you know preferred it to have came to us before they moved in but unfortunately things like this do happen and so we have to work with the occupants and the residents to try and get them to be in compliance as soon as possible.
And in the meantime it's a potential fire hazard and we don't even know about the dust with K D H E so.
I can also I don't know about the K D H E piece Howard the owner can talk he has when he purchased the property he has information from K D H E that the all of him explain it but then as far as we you did mention vibrations noise dust so no our our code does not allow that to produce beyond the property line and so if Bill we've talked about this but Bill goes out there or fires out there and and or the neighbors now it is one thing for wind to blow and because that's a gravel street too so I mean that the dust off that could move but if it is very obviously coming off the property that is something that we can address as city staff without necessarily K D H E because it is in our local code but all that Howard discussed the K D H E stuff.
My name's Howard Hancock owner of the facility part owner I also own with Ron Watkins who actually used to own the facility that Connor Industries is in now but anyway I wish we had some better pictures because at the other meeting that all that dust was coming from Connor I mean it was just blowing out of their stack and blowing all over the neighborhood it wasn't from us and as far as K D H E I don't have any problem with them coming onboard and you know inspection inspect for you know dust being caused or anything like that I mean you know we're here for the long haul we want to do everything right you know I've hired a fire protection services they're drawing up a a plan to sprinkle the whole building plus the loading dock and that's in the process right now at a cost of it's going to be about eighty four thousand dollars for that modification of the building and then also we've also drawn up the electrical schematics for the machine placement that's all done and I also have architect drawing we've we've looked in I've already found manufacturers that have available the automatic smoke ventilation systems it's when a fire starts vents the smoke and heat out you know the architect's working on that I've been in touch with everyone you know and today as well so all that is in motion to be done.
Do you have timelines on those?
Well you know all these architects are busy I mean I I called fire protection services and I said hey what's when can you have this ready for me I've hired him a week or two ago and he's working diligently on getting that done he has to do a plan first and then has to be approved and then they can go ahead and install it and then the architect you know same thing he's working on it he told me he should have something next week for me as far as the architect with the now the the building has exits and it has exit signs now we've had an we've had it we've got an issue with the electrical I mean we have brand new electrical put into the facility but it's not turned on you know everyone's waiting for the all the plants to be ready before they'll even let us turn that new power on so you know we're real anxious to get that done so I want everything I mean if I could snap my fingers and it was done tomorrow I'd be snapping away but you know I just have to work with everyone so. And in the meantime I mean we we've moved the pallets we've we've done the separation as fire regulations require you know Terry's hired in a how much how much does that machine cost eight hundred dollars an hour? Eight hundred and fifty dollars an hour for that machine to come out and grind up all the pallets and what they do is they load it right on a semi when semi's full it it leaves and it takes the mulch you know somewhere else offsite.
They're gonna start. Check towers with dependable pallet as far as the mulch that's setting there they're just trying to get it all ground up and then we're gonna have two trucks just running in and loading it up just for space purposes to have all that equipment they're running around all at once it's leaving it open for possible accidents and more mishaps but got a walking floor trailer in line and I got my own personal window that's gonna be hauling it all off either starting tomorrow afternoon just depending on when they can get the two smaller piles done or come first thing Friday morning.
So it should be all done.
Well we're hoping hoping by Monday I mean but you know just allowing for uncontrollable circumstances such as weather or equipment breaking down.
So all the mulch will be done by Monday that's the goal.
Anything else any questions? Get a motion to approve?
All of this need to be in the motion.
Yes.
All is part of the motion. Okay. Move to approve for first reading ordinance fourteen thirty four dash twenty five to issue a special use permit for a pallet recycling facility at two oh one South Cedar contingent upon the facility coming into compliance with building fire and zoning regulations and codes with the following conditions the facility remains in compliance with building fire and zoning regulations and codes to ensure compliance the Valley Center Fire Department will perform quarterly safety and compliance inspections the city's zoning administrator should also be notified of all ownership changes of the building and dependable pallets.
Second.
Have a motion as second to approve the first reading for ordinance fourteen thirty four dash twenty five any further discussion? I have one here just a minute okay I'm just gonna ask if we could have timelines by the next meeting when we do the second reading.
When is the next meeting?
The sixteenth.
Yeah so I can I can have you definitely.
Have timelines and where you're at.
Yeah I should be able to get that for you.
Okay.
Now do you want me to contact K D H E is that one of the things that one of the council members would like to have?
Yes.
Okay I can do that as well.
Okay and just get them to Kyle before the so we can get it in the packet.
Okay all right will do.
Okay I have a motion as second any further discussion or questions all in favor of the motion seek for raising your right hand. All opposed same sign motion carried. No it was.
Thank you.
Moving to I D M E approval of the pump purchase for the Abilene lift station.
Good evening Mr. Mayor of the council fortunate enough to have with me Jake Fosha with S C H Engineering he's gonna help me out with this. It says approve of pump purchase is actually a pump station that will go along with the design for the Abilene Avenue lift station that we approved of kind of doing with S C H design kind of earlier this year. There's been some slight changes to the proposal I'll let Jake go over that and I have copies of the update for the year I'll pass out to you with that I'd like to turn this over to Mr. Fosha.
Good evening so as a part of the lift station design and replacement project is really three steps and we're talking about the first step here tonight first step is the installation of the new prefabricated lift station system and that is provided by Ray Lindsay Company so that is what is before you is the purchase of that prefabricated lift station system that includes the pumps mechanical systems the wet well basically the manhole that it sits in and step two is the installation and rerouting of the sanitary sewer to this location which is what you see here and that's the plans that we have prepared is kind of the utility work to make the lift station work and move it to its new location and then step three is also part of our plans and that is really the decommissioning and removal of the existing lift station system. So as I mentioned step one is really installing the prefabricated lift station system that's provided by Ray Lindsay Company Joe Augustine is here with us tonight as well if there's any specific questions about the lift station system and then as mentions as I mentioned step two and three are part of our plans which we provided here that's really the utility work to get the sanitary sewer to the new lift station and then the decommissioning of the existing lift station. I'll stand for any questions. Oh and I guess Rod mentioned there was a change we had some coordination last week with our engineers and the engineer at the Ray Lindsay Company as well as Joe Augustine just some minor coordination items that we had to make sure that were included in the lift station system after our engineers reviewed it and a little bit of a time crunch to make sure we got this revised to you all before the price kind of increased again. Uh Ben. So Jake this the new lift station is gonna be north and west of the current one is that correct? Is that with all okay.
Gina.
What what is the size above ground how big is it?
Well so I believe it's about four by six size above ground.
And like half story or full story?
I believe it's between four and five feet tall yep and it'll have a it'll have a fence around it as well a six foot fence.
Like the one on Sheridan and Fifth Street? Matt?
And the city's got easement to put that there right from the the property we just rezoned.
Yes there's been actual right of way purchased and negotiated through for this whole setup.
Any other questions or comments get a motion to approve?
Motion for approval of purchase of Ibera duplex above ground pump station from Ray Lindsay Company in the amount of one hundred twenty six thousand eight hundred twenty five dollars.
Second.
Have a motion as second to approve the pump purchase for the Abilene lift station any further discussion? All in favor of the motion seek for raising your right hand? All opposed same sign motion carried.
Motion to approve contract for the installation of said pump station and wet well from Hickman Environmental Services L L C for the amount of forty five thousand eight hundred forty dollars forty three cents opinion K D H E approval of lift station design plans.
Second.
Have a motion as second to approve the contract for installation of the lift station any further discussion? All in favor of the motion seek for raising your right hand? All opposed same sign motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you moving on to Trails End Phase One bid award.
Good evening again so we had our bid letting for Phase One of Trails End which includes Tanner Trail from Seneca to Chisholm Trail Drive and there's a roundabout there at that intersection of Chisholm Trail Drive and Tanner Trail and that continues north to Fifth Street and then there's also a water main that runs along that stretch and a stretch of sanitary sewer that also connects into the school site that is the kind of project scope. My original estimate on this project was over two million I think it was two point one that's what our petitions came in at was about two point one two point two and then as we refined things my estimate kind of came down and then we had some bids come in slightly above my estimate so estimate or bid low bid came in at one point eight million still underneath what we approved for petitions so we're good there my revised estimate was two point seven slightly higher we do we are still seeing some higher prices since you know I'd say about. We do, we are still seeing some higher prices since, um, you know, I'd say about February, March of this year, we started to see some higher prices with some things changing in the landscape of government and everything. Uh, but Andel is a little bitter. We worked with Andel Four, they did concrete paving on Phase Four of Prairie Lakes just last year, uh, do great work, um, so recommend work.
Any questions or comments?
Move to award of the bid submitted by Andel Construction for Trails End Phase One Improvements Project in the amount of, uh, one million eight hundred forty-nine thousand eight hundred twenty-nine dollars, and authorized mayor or city administrator to sign.
Second. Have a motion as second to award the bid for Trails End Phase One. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, seek for raising your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Moving on to professional service agreement with S E C for the Trails End Phase One.
Alright, this is, uh, our agreements, uh, with you, the city, to provide construction services during the construction of Trails End Phase One, just described.
Questions, comments?
Make a motion to approve professional service agreement with S E H for Trails End Phase One in the amount of one hundred forty-eight thousand nine hundred dollars, and authorized mayor or city administrator to sign.
Second. Have a motion as second to approve the agreement with S E H for Trails End Phase One. Any further discussion? Questions? All in favor of the motion, seek for raising your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Moving on to item G.
Um, good evening, Mr. Mayor, council. Um, tonight is, uh, the notice of the hearing to exceed the revenue neutral rate. Uh, the sheet in front of you, uh, it's partially cut off here, but this is the sheet that was published, uh, not only on our website, but also in the Art Valley News, uh, a couple weeks ago. Hearing to exceed the revenue neutral rate, um, just to start off real quickly, absolutely nothing has changed since the last time I've talked to you, uh, on the third budget hearing. Um, the revenue neutral rate as calculated was forty-seven point five nine two, um, and there's the assessed valuations that we got on June fifteenth of this year, and again, all this information, uh, as we previously shared with you. Um, the rate that we have come in this year is fifty-three point six five six. That's how we got to the rate, uh, between the different funds, and the amount to be levied is four million seven hundred eight thousand nine hundred thirty-eight dollars. Uh, this is a one point two mill decrease from the twenty-twenty-five budget. Again, everything here has been previously, nothing has changed. Uh, just shows you how we calculate the revenue neutral rate, um, and again, I'm trying to do this as quickly as possible because I never run it long tonight, but, uh, the fifty-three point six five six would be the mills, uh, if approved tonight. Um, here's how we get to that, again, by the different funds, and here's the process. Um, we would need to next open the revenue neutral rate to the public hearing, uh, receive comments from anybody in attendance who would like to speak regarding the intent to levy property taxes in excess of the revenue neutral rate, uh, then we close the hearing and do a roll call. So I'll stand for any questions we have. Again, if you'd like me to go in more detail on the previous slides, I'd be happy to, but this is all review from the previous stuff that you've seen in the previous presentations.
Any questions or comments? Got to open a public hearing now. And open a public hearing to talk about this revenue, what is it now? Revenue shortage, yeah. Uh, we'll start at eight thirty-three. Is anyone here from the public that'd like to address the council? Uh, I've got one. You want to talk now, Glenn, or you want to talk to get to the budget? Pick your name and address, please.
Glenn Hawkins. I live at one zero zero four West Wind Drive in Valley Center. Lived there for forty-six years. My question is, looking at all the mill rates within all the communities around Wichita, we pay next to the highest rate, and my question is why? And even if we go to the, the renewal revenue rate, we're still higher than everyone else, except for Mulvane.
I'd be happy to pull the slides back up. I need a second to get to the, the previous presentations. Um, I did lay out all the different cities, um, as far as, uh, the surrounding ones around us, and, um, we are, uh, as far as the general fund rate, we're actually the second lowest city. Um, we are the highest on bond and interest, uh, as far as overall mill rate of fifty-three point six five six. We land pretty close to the fiftieth percentile right now for the cities that are around us. Um, we're not the highest. We have some cities in Newton that are in excess of seventy, uh, old mills right now just around their city. So, um, I, again, if you'd like me to get a detailed list, I'd be need about two or three minutes to get to it, but, um, I have shared that with you previously, um, I believe in the second presentation, and we fall, we fall closer to the fiftieth percentile right now. I, I, possibly will be going up, uh, in the next few years as we get more bond and interest on, but right now we're, we're off.
Uh, Ben? Clint, don't go anywhere for a second, if you don't mind. So I think what Glenn is referring to, because I've seen it shared on social media, can you explain that chart that has a second to highest, what that all includes, and some of those cities, unless I'm wrong, that, I don't know if he has it. It shows us the second highest behind Mulvane, but that, that is including, what, what do we have in our taxes that some of those cities do not have? Fire protection?
No, I mean, we're not, we're not going off of the handwritten.
No, 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 I understand that. I, I just, I just, we've had this in the past when we went over our, we went over our budget, because that's been posted, and that, some of those cities don't include, they're, they're covered by county fire, correct?
Correct.
And we're paying for our fire protection.
Correct.
And the other one was the library.
Correct.
Okay, I, I just want to make sure that there's an apples to apples, because you can pull things out of those, and...
Now, our school district, I mean, is, I mean, is significantly higher than, than others, uh, and so if you're looking at, at total mill levy, that's different than what you're looking at focusing just on city, and then if you're accounting those cities, and if you're including, uh, the library, uh, mill levy along with that as well. And so if you look at the total, uh, mill levy, just a quick comparison, uh, as Clint pulls this up for a more detailed response, um, but even just, uh, really close to us here in Valley Center, uh, you know, we pay less than, let's say, um, in Park City in Saddlebrook. If you live in Saddlebrook, you pay more total mill levy taxes, total mills, than you do in Valley Center, and that is because they have the rural fire district. And so that fire district, uh, ranges anywhere from that, um, fifteen to eighteen mills, uh, depending upon the year. I'm not sure where they ended up this year, um, but I know, like, even Saddlebrook, you know, they pay a higher, higher total mill levy, uh, on that two-six-two Park City side. Now, not two-five-nine Park City side, I'm talking just strictly two-six-two Park City side. Um, here is a total, uh, total levy comparison, uh, for you that you've seen previously. Uh, total mill levies, including school, state, all those things on the far right-hand side, or if you want to jump to the middle, uh, when it comes to the total city, um, you'll see that, that Mulvane on the Sumner County side, uh, Newton, uh, Eldorado, uh, Garden Plain, uh, Mulvane combined, Augusta, Clearwater, um, Andover, uh, Mays, uh, I mean, you guys can read them, and so I'm not sure what list you're referring to. Um, and so, when, what, if you want to look at the total city side, um, what you're looking at there is, uh, Clearwater, uh, is higher on the total city side, um, Augusta is higher on the total city side, uh, Mulvane, uh, Garden Plain, um, Eldorado, Cheney, um, and so on and so forth. So, um, that will answer that question for you, and if you want to listen to anybody else from the public, they can come back up and speak into the mic, so our friends at home can hear.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments? Come up to the, come up to the...
Gosh, well, I live, uh, level four, North Miles Avenue, uh, I've been here for, what, two years, but I've been in Valley Center for a decade. Uh, and we're just seeing lists, but we don't always understand what's going on with it, you know what I mean? You know, we are listed on this particular list second, but of course, that, I don't know what comparison this list is to that list, or, you know, what we're actually looking at, or why.
Well, we can make almost all the lists, read what we want to on that Facebook page, but it doesn't hurt to ask questions. We've got it spelled out here, the city taxes itself, uh, I think we're holding the line pretty good, to be honest. So, uh, any other questions? If not, I would like to make comment again.
Oh, okay, Ben. I, I just wanted to, my whole comment when Glenn got up and spoke was, I was, I had seen that list that you're talking about, sir. I just wanted to make sure we're clear on what we're comparing, because when that was shared, and, and a hundred percent, I'm glad you got up and asked, because that, that list does not spell out what everything was not covered in there, and we're paying for fire protection, Valley Center, Fire Department. Right, and I, I just wanted to make sure, like, and, and we're not trying to be combative with it, I want to answer questions, and that's exactly what this forum is for.
And, and, uh, and Councilman Anderson, and even one of the public too, um, you know, if there's questions or concerns, please reach out to us. I have no idea what list you're talking about. Um, I haven't received any emails or know what has been posted on Facebook. Um, all that we can answer are questions that we receive officially as city staff, uh, and, you know, through either coming to City Hall and sit down and chit-chat and have a cup of coffee with Clint and I and discussing the budget. Um, I've heard nothing, uh, this year when it comes to, to that side of, uh, where we rank, uh, you know, on a, a chart depending upon what mill levy, and so until, you know, unless I actually know specifics on what it is, I can't address it. All I can address is what we have, this is the official levies, uh, that our finance director puts together, and so, uh, but I encourage anyone, please, I mean, please do come in, we want to hear from you, I mean, we want to talk to the public, we want to make sure that you have the factual information, uh, that you're sharing, uh, especially on social media. Um, you know, we don't monitor every page, I mean, we monitor our own page, because that's the official Valley Center page. All the other pages are, are just gossip sections that don't have any clout, uh, and so I'll stand, uh, for answering other questions, otherwise give the podium back to Clint.
Okay. I was just gonna say the same thing. Um, I'm not a Facebooker, we do not know what's going on with these questions out there. I'm sorry. Um, I would just, again, I just want to say I'd be more than happy to visit with anybody that's out there in the public, uh, if they would like to sit down in my office and give me two different charts. Um, this is all published dollar, uh, information out on the state website, so anything I can show you where I got this information. So again, I'm, I'm happy to sit down with absolutely anybody, just give me a call, and we can do so, but I'm very confident that this matter is...
Anybody else from the public? Okay, close the public hearing, eight forty-two. Have a roll call on approval of the revenue neutral rate adoption, resolution seven-nine-six dash twenty-five.
Motion first, and then I'll do the roll call. Move to approve resolution seven-nine-six dash two-five to levy a property tax rate exceeding the revenue neutral rate.
Second.
Have a motion as second to approve the resolution seven-nine-six dash twenty-five. Any further discussion?
Just to be clear, a yes vote is to approve it? Okay.
That's an Odom.
Councilmember Colbert?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Gregory?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Stan?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, public hearing regarding the twenty-twenty-six Valley Center budget and adoption of the twenty-twenty-six budget. Clint?
Um, good evening again. Um, this is the second half of the presentation, uh, again, no information has changed since the last time.
Any questions? I'm gonna open the public hearing.
I don't think he's done yet.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. Thought you were sitting there.
Yeah. Um, we, it is, it is our request that this be passed tonight. Um, if it is not passed tonight, uh, just to be clear, we have only one other council this year that it could be passed, which would be September sixth-sixteenth. Um, everything is due to the state on October first, so for me to have the proper amount of time to put everything together, it would be appreciated if we could possibly get this done tonight. Um, this would have to be signed by all council members. Uh, just a quick recap of some of the previous information, um, again, nothing has changed. Uh, there's the add-on, uh, dollars, it'd be nine million one hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars, there's the different funds, um, here it's not working very well, a lot of size, can you also resize that? Um, nothing has changed from the previous time. Uh, the budget income is negative seventy-three thousand three hundred and nine dollars, as you could see in previous years, twenty-three, twenty-four actual, um, we almost always end up exceeding it, and, um, I have no doubt that we'll probably do that again in twenty-twenty-five as well as twenty-twenty-six. But everything's just really out of sync right now. Um, highway funds, um, just a quick recap there. There's a recap of the enterprise funds, uh, what we are budgeting for revenues and expenditures, and, uh, there's also the reserve fund balance, uh, water and sewer, as a combined both water and the water reserve, sewer and sewer reserve, stormwater and solid waste do not have reserve funds. It's our recommendation for the city of Valley Center to adopt the twenty-twenty-six budget, partially funded by a property tax levy of four million seven hundred eight thousand nine hundred thirty-eight dollars, equivalent to the fifty-three point six five six million. I apologize for all of that, it's just, it's just all of the funding currently. So, um, the next steps would be to, uh, open the, uh, approval of the budget public hearing, uh, receive comments, uh, approve the resolution to adopt the budget, and then open the public hearing after it is approved, so slightly different procedures.
Okay, I'll open the public hearing at eight forty-seven. Anyone here from the public that'd like to address the council on the budget that we haven't already heard from, or if they have any more questions?
We're conferring, I don't believe there is a resolution that goes along with the approving of the budget. You approve by resolution exceeding the R and R. This is your approving the actual budget number, so I just want to be clear on that, because I don't have a resolution prepared for you if there are.
More comment from the public? Someone says I close after, close after we approve it? Okay.
Yes. Yes, and so next steps if there's no comments from is to approve and adopt the 2026 budget as presented and then so you make that motion and then you conclude the public hearing and authorize the necessary signatures, which is different than what we normally do, but actually if you look at the code on the way the state has it, we discuss as city managers during our LGN meeting and this is how we're supposed to do this now, I guess, moving forward and the state's getting a little stricter.
Okay.
I thought the same thing as far as, oh, I thought you closed the public hearing and then you vote, but they said not on the budget.
Okay.
I move to.
Go ahead, Rod.
You got it. Yeah, motion to adopt the 2026 budget as presented.
Second. Have a motion as second to approve the budget at is a roll call? No? Okay. All in favor of the motion, same for raising your hand. All opposed, same sign, motion carried. Now, I'll close the public hearing at eight forty-nine. Moving on to approval to expand the H ACH payments.
Good evening again. This is one of the first of two presentations I'll do, one first regarding ACH, the second is credit cards. Credit card fees continue to climb throughout the city and we're trying to take a couple of different steps to push people to the ACH process, maybe we'll save us some money. Currently, the city takes ACH payments only for the monthly utility payments that are on the fifteenth of each month. What we would like to do is essentially expand that process, have a piece of paper at the community development building as well as our own building where we could take this payment for essentially any type of payment, be it court, licenses, permits, enterprise funds, whatever it might be. We have a previously negotiated rate with People's Bank that is essentially free, so this will be something that we will not be charging for. I put just a few cities up there. A lot of the cities had this information unlisted, Newton Augusta and Derby all charged between one and two dollars. Again, it is our recommendation to not have a charge for this and simply give our citizens and vendors another way to pay free of charge to kind of expand our service offerings and hopefully get to take less credit.
Any questions or comments?
Make a motion to approve expanding the receipt of ACH payments for all to all departments for the city.
Second. Have a motion as second to approve expanding ACH payments. Any further discussion?
I just want to thank you for negotiating this with zero fees. I think that's great. Thank you.
Any questions or comments? Motion to approve? Oh, I had one, I had a second. Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, all in favor of the motion to expand HS HCAH payments? Same for raising your hand? All opposed, same sign, motion carried. Approval to expand and increase credit card fees.
This is kind of ties into ACH, but essentially credit card fees continue to climb. Last year, we took in fifty thousand three hundred dollars. We paid fifty thousand three hundred dollars in credit card fees and we recouped only thirty thousand five hundred forty-four dollars of it. Essentially, we have been subsidizing this at the rate of one thousand six hundred forty-six dollars per month. This continues to climb. Real story, somebody came into Kyle's building the other day and charged fifteen thousand dollars in permits and other expenses and we do not recoup anything on credit cards other than the ones that pay online or come into City Hall and pay in person. So community development, community development, the enterprise funds, they're taken in person. We do not recoup those fees. Kyle's example, fifteen thousand dollars, probably close to three percent, that's four hundred fifty dollars to the city, so one for them personally to pay by credit card. We're wanting to push those people more toward ACHs, but again, if they choose to take a credit card, we'd like to add a three percent fee on there. I listed the other cities out there. Essentially, I could not find any cities anywhere that are still trying to fully subsidize their credit cards, so we're not, we're kind of catching up, so to speak, to the other places. Most of them are charging between three and three and a half percent. Goddard Derby had it unlisted, but said that they do charge fees. We will still give our citizens the ability to pay in cash, check, money order, cashier's check or ACH completely free of charge, but if they would like to pay by credit card, it is our recommendation to have a three percent fee on that.
I don't have a question, I just have a comment. I know when we went through COVID, we absorbed that, but I don't think the taxpayers that are not using this should shoulder that those fees. If you're using it, you need to pay for it. That's the bottom line. I'm full wholeheartedly in favor of charging these fees for credit card users. There are enough other ways we have to pay that we offer, so.
Good evening. And just to be clear, I mean, we do charge now as just the percentage.
Correct.
If you recall, we were at like two, two and a half or two and a quarter, I'm sorry, and then we went back down to one point seven five and then credit card users jumped again. And so I mean, you know, following up with the other cities, it's just best to move the one point seven five that we do charge utility customers to three percent, you know, make it uniform. That's what most cities do. If you see local businesses around the area, you know, everybody, you know, you always talk about all the perks on credit cards, all these special reports, well, the person that takes it is the one paying it. Those just don't magically appear for free when you when you use your credit card. So somebody's short shouldering that expense and right now it's, you know, all the customers in Valley Center, so moving that from one point seven five. I just want to make sure you're clear that we do charge, we're not covering our costs now, three percent and then for all instead of just water or utility billings.
Any other questions?
Make a motion to approve expanding and increasing the credit card rates from one point seven five percent to three percent for all credit card charges.
Second.
Have a motion as second to approve and to expand and increase all credit card fees. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, same for raising your hand? All opposed, same sign, motion carried. Moving on to approval for the Cassell software system.
Good evening again. We went to, I've kind of recapped this a little bit previously, but when I went to the National JFWA Conference in late May, we found out of Tyler Technologies, which is runs our encode software system. It's been for I believe twenty-four years now and is going to be discontinued. The first thing that we did when we got back is we took a look at Incode version ten, which is the upgrade version of that. Staff did not feel that it had all the features that we needed as a city to continue to grow and and all the needs that we had, so I then went out and found seventeen possible ERP vendors that we have been very, very busy in the last sixty days doing demos and phone calls and emails and kind of discussing with them. There was actually one other one here that I didn't list, Springbrook, but here's some of the finalists that we have, Central Square, Opec, Clarion, Cassell. Cassell is the only vendor that we can find besides Tyler Technologies that have the full municipal port module built into the actual software system. Everybody else, it was going to add an additional five to ten thousand dollars per year onto that annual expense that I have listed there. That does not include that additional cost and you start running the risk of that software may not talk properly with the other software. You've got to download files and CSVs and all that. So we were pretty blown away by the Cassell presentation they had and I can tell you that every single facet of the city will be vastly upgraded. I've been joking that we've been driving a nineteen eighty-five Datsun for five hundred thousand miles for our software system and we're about to go to two hundred. So I'm really excited about it. It is going to be a very, very large undertaking. We're setting the date for February first, twenty twenty-seven to make this go live. I do have slightly updated numbers. I continue to negotiate with them after this was published. The final Cassell number came in at seventy thousand eight hundred and eighty-six dollars per year, which is twenty-six hundred twenty-eight less in the annual expense column, so I was able to continue to negotiate that down. The one-time conversion expenses landed right in that at the very low end at one hundred and thirty-four thousand five hundred and eighty-eight, which is two hundred dollars more than the lowest number that I have there. We did budget on the annual expense, it fits right in. The one-time expenses are a little bit higher than what we have. However, with the passing of the credit cards and stuff on time, we're no longer going to be absorbing those fees, so I think so that's going to go right toward a little bit of these extra expenses they have on the one-time side. Again, we're going to target a February first, twenty-seven timeframe. The only other information I have is we weren't really expecting this to get this process going and sign the contracts. We have to come up with forty-eight thousand six hundred and fifty-four dollars right away in this budget year to get the process started, so I hadn't planned on that. Everything was budgeted for next year. So what we're going to do is take that forty-eight thousand six hundred and fifty-four dollars and we're going to take it out of equipment reserves, which has over four hundred thousand in it. We're just going to kind of borrow it there and then on January first of next year, we can pay equipment reserves right back out at the budget a hundred thousand that we have for next year. So equipment reserves essentially going to loan money from one fund to another for about four months, so everything's going to come out the same with the stuff, you know, that's an unusual part of it. We just did not have forty-three thousand budget for this year because we were not expecting that, but that was kind of our little workaround there. So stamp for any questions, but it is our motion or our recommendation to have you approve the Cassell and get the contract signed. We are kind of on a tight timeline. They need fifteen months to get this going and that's going to push us right out to that timeframe that we're talking about and on March first of twenty twenty-seven are Tyler reviews, so we really want to try to beat that deadline so that we're not stuck with Tyler more than next year and we can hit that timeframe, so we kind of move this to the top of the priority list and that is our choice.
Clint, I know we're just pursuing this with the question tonight, but but what is that? Do you know what options they have for contract length? Is it three-year, five-year, ten-year? What would we be able to possibly lock in that seventy thousand dollars to?
That's a really good question. He's he's right now preparing the contracts in order to continue to talk on that, so I've not seen that wording yet. I don't have the contract in front of me to where I can present it to you. I did, to be honest with you, I can't answer your question yet, but we continue to negotiate with them. Right now, I can tell you that Tyler's charging us about five to six percent annual increases. They're more over three to five percent range, but I don't know if we can get that seventy-three thousand locked for a few years or not, so that's something I'll work on, but I'm just not sure at this time. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Get a motion to approve?
Motion to authorize city staff to pursue agreement with Cassell for an enterprise resource planning ERP for software system.
Second. Have a motion as second to approve for Cassell software system. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, same for raising your hand? All opposed, same sign, motion carried. Moving on to the approval of purchase of vacuum jetter tank truck.
Good evening again. So through the budget process this year, we approved a set amount to purchase a combination jetter vacuum truck and we have before you here is a proposal from Armor Equipment for said truck to build out to be purchased after the first of the year with twenty twenty-six funds. The price that's before you is slightly above the budget amount, however, if you have questions about purchasing, Mr. Clint can help us out with that. He has a point. We also have with us tonight Justin Hansen with Armor Equipment if you have any technical questions about this truck. Also, the purchase price you have there is a Sourcewell contract price. Sourcewell is basically your, the same thing as the state contracted price. They pre-negotiate prices with other vendors and so there's it's it's just like they already went through the RFP process for us, so it's a renegotiated price.
Robert?
That's probably going to be Clint question, so and Rodney too, probably. So one, what is the lifespan of a vehicle like this?
Justin Hansen with Armor Equipment. With your regular maintenance on this trucks, we see them lasting more than ten years with your general maintenance and stuff like that.
Now Rodney and Clint, what's my return on investment? What's the city going to save for this kind of an investment for six hundred thousand dollars? What are we going to save each year for this?
Previously, we have budgeted every year fifty thousand dollars to contract out the cleaning and flushing of our sewer line. We'll be able to perform that function ourselves in-house with this truck, along with other emergency services such as when we have a lift station having problems, we have to call a contractor to clean that lift station up, clean out a stormwater line, we have to call out a contractor to clean that. We can do that ourselves. Not only do we save the money, save the potential time for the scheduling, we have the equipment available in our timeframe to get these things done.
Perfect, thank you.
And also potholing, and so when we like at Seneca Street, we had a pothole to find our own service lines because the locator couldn't quite locate them exactly, so we usually spend anywhere from, you know, twelve, fifteen, two thousand dollars, you know, to to locate some of those potholing services, so it also is easier to pothole.
Can you explain what that term means? I know what it is, but.
I'm so sorry.
It's all right.
It's where, do you want to explain? Sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, you're taking us thunder.
It's essentially wet digging, so instead of putting the shovel or spade in the ground where you could blindly cut a line, basically they'll hit that dirt with really high-pressure water, turn it into mud, suck it up by the ground, keep doing that until you visually see what you're looking for.
The power washer and a shop vac.
Yeah.
Yeah. If you've never seen it, go look at a video, they're pretty cool.
That sounds awesome.
Yep.
Yeah, I watched him do that in.
And we'll say another function we're going to be able to do with this truck potentially could come in handy here shortly is letting copper will be able to go around and locate those unknown sites to see what what that service line has made of the dirt.
Any other questions? Chris?
What kind of training is going to come along with that?
Kind of what? I'm sorry?
Training.
Training?
With with our particular truck, we our training curve is very minimal. We train all your, when we deliver it, we train all your operators and I also live in Park City, so if you guys have new new operators that get hired on or whatever need help, I'm just five minutes away, I'd be more than happy to schedule with your department and I'll help them out. Thank you.
We do also have, I know of two employees on staff that have operated like pieces of equipment like this on regular basis.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? I get a motion to approve?
Make a motion to authorize purchase of vacuum jetter truck in the amount of six hundred and five thousand four hundred and forty dollars and twenty cents and authorize mayor and city administrator or excuse me, or city administrator to sign.
Second. Have a motion as second to approve the purchase of the vacuum jetter truck. Any further discussion?
Mayor, real quick, I got a question.
Bill, I'm sorry.
Bill time?
So this is this schedule is scheduled to be built out so we can purchase this right after the first of the year, so we can purchase it for twenty twenty-six funds.
Excellent, thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor of the motion, same for raising your hand? All opposed, same sign, motion carried. Moving on to the plaid agreement with PEC.
Good evening again, Mayor Kocel. Appreciate you hanging in. Appreciate you hanging in there with us. And so before you is an agreement that is a long time coming. If you recall, oh, a few years back, Mr. Herb Ray donated some ground to the city, is roughly 14 acres. It's on the end of Ash, kind of in between Ash and Cedar on the north side of Clay Street. So if you're familiar with Hornet Cutting System, Safari Tool, it's that empty ground that we now moved the tree and brush and limb pile to in anticipation of our water treatment plant. And so that whole area was donated to us. We do plan on laying that out and plating that entire replating, that area, and then having some light industrial parcels available for sale. We want, we've, you know, I can't even count how many times Kyle and I get approached with people that want to build a 40 by 60-foot, you know, metal building to store their toys or for electrical or plumbing business. And this will give us an opportunity to expand and have a little light industrial park on ground that was donated. Now, the great thing about this is the total fee is not going to be absorbed 100% by us as a city. And so we're partnering with some of the businesses on the south side of this area with Hornet Cutting Systems that has, there's a triangle piece that we want cleaned up. And so Bryce Turner with Hornet Cutting Systems was kind enough to help cost share this. And so this fee will not be absorbed 100% by the land bank funds, which we had budgeted to use towards this project. And so we're hoping to cut this number in half, share half of this expense with Hornet Cutting Systems. And then that will kind of then help us kind of clean up that triangle piece because there's a sewer line that runs east and west through that. And so we can't build anything on that parcel anyways. And then we'll help consolidate that into two of the Hornet Cutting System blocks that are located in that area. Clint, if you scroll down, here's a map. Pretty sure I included a map. Because I know that's a lot of which ways. There you go. Here we go. Look at this, beautiful. And so this gorgeous new road that was built for the tree pile will kind of be there for now. And then what we'll do is we'll put a brand-new replat over the top of this, and that's what the agreement is before you. That little triangle piece is, you can see almost touches Hornet Cutting Systems on the far south side. And so if you draw a straight line where the east and west, kind of where Avenue, if you draw that straight west, there's a sewer line and an easement that runs right there. And so that triangular piece, that's to the south of where the coal sack is there, the, kind of the new asphalt milling road, that's the parcel that we'll end up probably just donating since Hornet Cutting Systems is going to help us with half of the cost of this project. You know, we kind of get a return of that. And so it'll be really nice. The ultimate plan, if you recall years ago, when Herb Ray donated this ground, the plan is to connect Cedar to Ash Avenue some way, somehow. I'm not an engineer, and so I mean, it's just some drawings, lines, squiggly marks that will connect us somehow to Ash. And then we can hopefully get those pallets and all those things off of, from going north on Cedar and then going on to Main Street. So we can get all the trucks from Connor Industries and our, the new pallet place there to come south through our industrial park versus going by Baker and by going through the residential section. I mean, I will try my best to do backflip because that'd be really nice. And to get them off from trying to make this corner on Meridian and Main. Because we've all been there, we've all seen it, we've all had a backup before when that truck comes and tries to make that corner. So the plan is to really have a new little light industrial park area that we can sell individual lots for. There'll be high density because it can be, and we'll try to get some additional industrial park revenue coming into our fine city. I'll stand for any questions.
Any questions?
Where's the next burn pile spot?
So it'll include that, and so we'll keep an area for the burn pile. I don't know where the entrance will be, but it won't be by this temporary road. And so that's why we kind of, you know, we used the rock from the rec center site to save money, and Fremar was kind enough not to charge us anymore, to bring it, and they actually laid it, and we packed it in with our city staff. So that was really meant to be temporary for the road. Now, where the location is, wherever makes most sense. And so it could be pushed maybe a little bit more to the west. It kind of depends upon however the lot layout is, but there'll be a special, specially designated lot just for the city of Valley Center and that we will keep ownership of for the tree pile and mulch.
Any other questions or comments? Again, motion to approve?
Motion to approve agreement with PEC for Valley Center Industrial Park Platte in the amount of $47,500 and authorize mayor or city administrator to sign.
Make a motion as second to approve the plat agreement with PEC. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say for raising your hand? All opposed, same sign, motion carried. Moving on to approval of the fire agreement with Sedgwick County?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So this is, this is something we've already been doing. I've been told once upon a time, perhaps when Brent was still in kindergarten, we had such an agreement. And since then, it's been lost. Nobody can find it on either side. Sedgwick County does our inspections now. These inspections will be for building plan reviews or inspections of the buildings once the buildings are built for the final inspections. It'll be commercial buildings and related to fire, whether it be fire alarms, the sprinkler system, those types of reviews. I'll stand for any questions.
Don't we do this?
No. So currently, it would either be Sedgwick County or the State Fire Marshal's Office. We don't have anybody certified to do these inspections for the fire services, the sprinkler systems, the fire alarms, those types of things.
Make a motion to approve fire agreement?
Any other questions?
Sorry, this, this is to, this is for the sign-off when they're, when they're applying for permits. This is not the live inspection that Jett was talking about with our firefighters.
What Bill, Bill's inspecting the other portions of that building, the other codes. This is specifically related to the fire, to the sprinkler systems, that, that system in there, fire alarms, things like that. I don't, Bill, I don't believe does that. His is.
They do that annually. They do that commercially annually.
Yeah, and so in the state of Kansas, you either have to have the State Fire Marshal Office or the State Fire Marshal Office has an agreement with Sedgwick County. And so Sedgwick County meets those requirements. So you have to have the State Fire Marshal come out and inspect commercial property sprinkler system. We cannot, locally you cannot. However, Sedgwick County can offer those services so we don't have to wait for the State Fire Marshal to come down and inspect those. We thought we always had an agreement. The county always thought we had an agreement, but looking further into it, no one has an agreement with Valley Center. And so this is just really ratifying what we currently do. So right now, in the meantime, we have to wait and our bonds, or the school bond projects, all those that have to be sprinkled, the State Fire Marshal's Office has to send somebody down here to Valley Center to inspect those. Once we approve this and we go back to the way we've been doing it, which is having Sedgwick County inspect that on behalf of the Fire Marshal.
And that cost gets passed along to the permit?
Yes.
Price, okay, okay. That was a, sorry, Matt.
Any other questions or comments? Again, a motion to approve?
Go ahead, Matt. Make a motion to approve our agreement with Sedgwick County and authorize mayor, city clerk, and city attorney to sign. Second.
Have a motion as second to approve the fire agreement with Sedgwick County. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say for raising your right hand? All opposed, same sign, motion carried. Moving on to ordinance 431-25, vacated portion of A Street.
Maybe need a restroom break for the next round? We're only halfway through. Good evening again. And so this ordinance is doing some cleanup work. I apologize for lengthy agenda. We had just a lot going on, and so now we finally have agendas where we can put some more on. But there's been a lot of, a lot of things happening. This is for the area that is right behind us here on Park Avenue. And so it dead ends currently where the Eden's fences, well, actually, that's not where technically the right-of-way ends. And so it's beyond that point. The city, I think, when the school was back there, where Lloyd went and Park School, that, that one, that was ever vacated. And so Paul Eden reached out to me and Rodney a while back and asked if he could maybe do some grading in this area. And then that's when it kind of came out. We're like, hold on, where does our right-of-way end technically? And it's far beyond where that gate is. And so this is a cleanup. We worked with our city attorney, Mr. Arbuckle. We hired PEC, if you recall, to do this vacation. And so this is the legal description vacating that section so that we don't have any responsibility, you know, giving that to the property owner, AKA Mr. Paul Eden there in Eden's Auto, I think, one of his LLCs, I think that was it. But this area is one that we had already thought was vacated, and so kind of more of a cleanup. Stand for any questions?
Any other comments?
Move to approve for first reading ordinance 1431-25 vacating a portion of Park Street.
Have a motion as second to approve ordinance 31-25. Any further discussion? Question? All in favor of the motion, say for raising your right hand? All opposed, same sign, motion carried. Moving on to ordinance 1432-25, annex.
Good evening once again, Mayor Council. This area is commonly referred to as the Kingsbury area on Ford Street, Ford and Seneca. Seneca is where we had that realignment of the road, where we purchased that home years ago. And so we had thought that when we took over the right-of-way and all this, that little triangle piece and that entire 30-foot stretch along Ford, that, that then became our right-of-way, which it did. However, it did not come into the city of Valley Center since it was adjacent, it was actually in the county. And so when we were going through the KDOT process on Seneca for the trail that's going to connect from Ford to Fifth, it was identified that, well, that right-of-way isn't in the city limits and needs to be in the city limits in order to receive our trail money. And so in order to receive that WAMPO KDOT trail funds for the 400 and some odd thousand dollars, we further went back and Mr. Arbuckle researched it, and so we need to annex in these two tracks. They are in our right-of-way, but they're in the county, they're not in the city limits. And so we need to annex them into the city limits.
Any other comments? Motion to approve?
Move, move to waive first reading and approve ordinance 1432-25 to annex permanent right-of-way along Ford and Seneca Street.
Make a motion as second to approve ordinance 1432-25 for first reading. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say for raising your right hand? All opposed, same sign, motion carried. Moving on to the consent agenda?
Motion to approve a consent agenda as presented.
Have a motion as second to approve the consent agenda as presented. Any further discussion, questions? All in favor of the motion, say for raising your right hand? All opposed, same sign, motion carried. Moving on to staff reports. I had to look and see who was first.
Hey, you're good. All right, good evening again. Couple of quick announcements. The last farmer's market of the season is this Thursday, so please come out and support vendors one more time. My department has had a vacancy for a few weeks. Sabrina Young has filled that vacancy as our community development assistant. She started today, so I'll try to get her at a future meeting so that you all can have a chance to meet her. And then the other item, Clint has pulled up for me, just give, just show it to you briefly, since it is getting late. On Friday last week, our temporary website launched. So because of the timeline, we weren't able to get our final design ready to launch, so we have a temporary one up. So if you go to the website, it looks new, some things are a little different. But I'm having Clint, I was going to have him go to, you scroll down just a little bit, Clint, to the left purple circle, so the agenda and minutes. So I wanted to highlight this one because a lot of people do look at these, and I wanted to just highlight that it is different. So there's bullet points here with all of our different boards that meet that have agendas and minutes to click on that to then go view those agendas and minutes. So if you click on that, Clint, and then if you scroll down again, it's by year, and there's just a drop-down agenda, the minutes, and the media attached. So it's just a little bit different layout than it used to be. And again, this is temporary, so in a few more months, we will have a completely new site launch, and so things will look a little bit different. I'm still, I found a couple of things today that are a little off, so there's still some tweaking. If you happen to be on the website and something doesn't make sense, please let me know, and we will get it corrected. I'll stand for any questions you might have.
Message? Thank you. Bill's not here. Boyd? Boss is not here. Barry's not here. Clint, anything else?
Kyle has already told you that he does have his position filled. We are concluding up the interviews for the utility billing specialist that is open since Katie did go over and was promoted to the court clerk. So hopefully, we will be able to announce someone in the next meeting. And Rodney has interviews starting tomorrow for his opening with the Water Waste Water. So a lot of stuff going on in the HR world.
Friday, September 12th is Councilmember Anderson's birthday.
Happy birthday. Okay, moving on, governing body reports. I'm done. I don't have anything. Robert?
I'm not prolonging this anguish any further, and I have nothing.
Amy?
Nothing, thank you.
No, thank you.
Tina?
I believe the next SCAC meeting is September 13th in Bentley.
Yeah.
You can go. Might be interesting.
Chris?
Just me between you. I have nothing, sir.
I'll take bids on when I close this. And to the gentleman from Castle, you should have slipped Brent some money. You could have gotten moved up the agenda some. Glad I made the motion to adjourn.
Second.
Have a motion as second to adjourn. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say for raising your right hand? All opposed, same sign, motion, needing adjourned.